I was waiting until right here we convene.
Hi.
Been putting on the pensive suit, it was a little hot. Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, if anybody would like to do a call to the public, there is a form that you can fill out.
How you doing, Tom?
My head's on my head, my hair fell down.
That goes to Scott.
Where's your dad?
Yeah. I ended up getting DQ, but the people there are like, you know, most movies get DQs.
Everything's going really well, but no, it's not like, no, I'm working more than I ever have. I'm pretty darned, but it's okay.
Okay, at this time we will call a order. We have motion to adopt a agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Stand for the flag of the week.
Why, can you write that down? Please remove the cover.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Observe a moment of calm. Thanks. Okay, um, we need, with a board meetings not previously approved, minutes June 22nd, exacting session July 1st, need a motion to adopt?
Do you need a motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that brings us up to six presentation. Community Resource Center, you're it, you have the floor.
Okay. I know some of you have not been involved, but we've, I've actually been working with the board since October on this project. And a lot of you haven't heard about it yet either, so I, I just will very briefly, I believe you all have a copy of this, I will just very briefly read the mission statement and then I'll take questions. Um, this is, I'm gonna come over here, so I might got my back to you. Can you hear me? Okay. The idea here is to establish a collaboration with the school board to use part of the school ground as a community center. And it would involve all kinds of programs, from the oldest people to the youngest people within the community. And there would be a large collaboration also on many programs with the school. There would also, none of this will be affected, tax money has nothing to do with this, it will all be fundraisers and grant money and donations. So there, there will be absolutely no tax increase, it will be self-funding. Okay, the mission statement, it says this contract represents a collaboration between Maine Consolidated School District and the community within Maine Consolidated School District. Represented by the Parks Community Center for usage of school grounds and buildings as a resource and gathering place for community functions, activities and fundraising. These functions and activities will center around recreation, education, health and wellbeing. As well as social and civic events for the benefit of pupils, parents, families and the community of parks. Fundraisers will benefit the community center, Maine Consolidated School District and/or the community of parks. A cultural center that supports lifelong learning as well as student, family and community enrichment and empowerment. So that's the mission statement. And since I know a lot of you haven't been involved and I'm asking the board today to sign the contract, to approve it and then sign it. I'd like to ask especially the board, if anybody has any questions about this. Yeah, Doc.
Is there any room on campus where you might hand your hat?
Um, there is, perhaps. I, because we haven't had a signed contract to date, we haven't officially done anything yet. But we have discussed the possibility of a shared office space in one of the buildings, yeah, right up here. So that is a possibility. We're also looking at establishing a website that will, everything will be listed on, um, all the activities and whatnot. So initially, we're not gonna have any funding because it takes almost a year to get a nonprofit status established. So we will be operating on very slim budgets for the first year, but there's still a lot of stuff we can do, so, um, any other questions? Yes.
Uh, what I, I've read some of it, but what are the length in terms of time, how many years, or is it just open?
It's open and it can be canceled by the school board at any time.
Thank you.
With the use of the shared space here on campus, how are we going to protect the integrity of the classroom and classroom belongings with the use of the public coming in? I mean, there's also very sensitive data that is stored in the classroom.
Of course, of course. And that because we haven't actually technically established that, those details have not been withheld. That would be, that would be a primary concern, and if there's not an office established, that's okay too, that doesn't prevent the community center from going forward. That's just if we can work out all the details and of course, the school takes priority in everything, so, yeah, yes.
The old sped building last year's second grade, second grade is going back to the Mary Bean. That building is not gonna be open, but its use is gonna be, oh wait, let me rephrase that. Multipurpose, yeah, so there will be several different things in there, but there should not be any sensitive, there will not be a class in there. Um, and the amount of sensitive material or items should be relatively nonexistent. And there are two halves and there is a divider, so we can, yeah, so we will work on making sure that our stuff is secure and that community resource stuff is secure.
Anything else? And I'll be around after the meeting and whatnot if any of you have anything else to ask.
Um, with, do we, are we ready to schedule this for an agenda, we need to put on an agenda.
It's on the agenda, it's, it's under, yeah.
Okay, where's that?
Page two.
So this is just an introductions or comment section?
That's number two on.
Okay, yeah, okay, alright.
It's like both presentations later on are under specific, are items of specific actions.
Yeah, I had two copies of.
You did, cuz I forgot to put the, I forgot to put something on my camera, what was?
So no more questions?
All extensive options. Also, I'm on my own, no, you're good. Okay. So it's not, you don't have a?
No, it is, I put it, I played the men in the agenda, which, I put it on my.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so then you have.
Okay, alright, thank you all for being here, the fun stuff, we're gonna talk money, taxes and budget. This is the last few years, what the adopted budget was, what the revised budget was, and you may, if you wanna swing around to get a look at it. And then what the student population was. One thing to remember is the budget formula is driven by the number of students, that's where it starts, okay? Local school districts are funded primarily by local property tax. About seventy-five percent of the budget is funded, one of two different streams, from local property tax. Additional money is provided by the state and roughly about twenty-five percent. On behalf of M C S D, I do thank you for your continued support. Given that this year goes the way two years ago went, please, come on campus, take a look at how your tax dollars are spent. This is an open and transparent campus, it is important that the community and parents know what we do. The short answer on taxes, there is no short answer. Assess valuation is up from thirty-four point four million to thirty-six point one. The budget increased from two point three to two point five. I'm gonna address that in a moment, it's not, it is a real increase, well, let me address it now. Running along I forty is Transwestern Pipeline. So the state of Arizona has a formula for assessing the valuation of a pipeline. They then, Department of Revenue tells us, or tells the community, or tells on Transwestern how much they have to pay in taxes. And then everybody else, they sort it out and figure out how much we're gonna get. Transwestern went to court, I believe, starting in twenty thirteen and appealed that, and they have won every time. So Maine Consolidated owes Transwestern a little shy of three hundred thousand dollars for excess taxation, for excess taxes. That is in the two point five, what we have to pay back now, okay? We paid back a chunk in twenty sixteen, and I believe this is the last five years. The legislature is working on it, but the legislature has not as of yet changed how they assess utilities, okay? State aid is roughly five hundred thousand under equalization. The budget may change because it's based off current year funding. That's why in the other slide I did have a revised budget, cuz the budget sometimes does go up and down. Here, not a lot, less than a hundred thousand. The tax levy is static. The school board no longer sets the tax levy, that comes out of the county. And once that tax levy is set, it cannot change for that fiscal year. We cannot independently set the tax levy. This is an example of a real home in, in Parks that was valued at a hundred and seventy thousand dollars in twenty sixteen. This gives you the tax rate and then this gives you what the actual, what's it gonna cost me out of pocket? So valuation did go up a little bit, that home would now be worth two hundred and nine thousand. It's probably worth a lot more, just so you know, I do a straight percentage increase. What was the percentage increase of the assessed valuation overall? And that's then the percentage increase of the home value and the tax rate, based on some of the things that are happening in Flagstaff. That may be a little questionable. But as of right now, last year the tax rate would have been about a thousand fifteen dollars, this year it's gonna be about a thousand sixty-seven. I'm, I do not yet have the tax rate for the tax levy. I'm projecting it's gonna be somewhere around five point five to five point six, okay? Alright, that's from last year. Preparing to reopen school, preparing for virtual classrooms, and again, we are preparing to reopen school right now. There is a mitigation plan that we have, that we used last year. As of right now, um, we do not anticipate using it, so there will not be masks. My recommendation is that we still do temp checks, that we still encourage parents, if their student is not feeling well or sick or is symptomatic, to keep them home. We will not be doing bubble theory. Bubble theory is where, for example, last year, third grade interacted with third grade. They did not interact with fourth grade, they went to lunch by themselves, they went to recess by themselves, they stayed within a bubble. Going into next year, we are not anticipating that we will be doing that. Recession will be joint, there will be lunch, just like there has been traditionally. There will be co-mingling. So are my taxes going up? Yes, they are, the taxes are gonna go up a little bit. The tax levy went up, assessed valuation increased, the budget increased. The biggest issue however, is Transwestern and our liability at two hundred and eighty-four thousand dollars is what we have to pay back. And a school district like Maine Consolidated, it does hit us pretty hard. However, when we get to some of the other budget stuff, you will see that Mel has done a good job at, at keeping some resources hidden, well, not hidden, but in reserve. Any questions?
Can you, on this budget for next year, the administration burden that it looks so much? Um, so, mine, twenty-three hundred, twenty-four hundred, twenty-five hundred for administration? It might have two hundred and fifty thousand to four hundred and forty-eight thousand, if I'm reading that correctly?
She's reading mine, mine's twenty, twenty-two hundred.
So this is like four lines down this one?
Yeah. That's a good question.
That is a question for Mel. Overall admin costs actually rolling into next year are gonna be down?
Yeah, that would be, that would be like a hundred thousand dollars over our budget.
Yeah, so they're going down.
Yeah.
Your overall admin costs.
Yeah.
Part of that, so I don't, now I will tell you this, they just did or redid the USUPR, which is the universal, it's, it's the budgeting code and how everything has to be budgeted. And from time to time, they do change where certain things go in other categories. But no, I can't answer that question, I don't know. I would ask Mel next time.
So are these itemized?
The itemized are on the legal sheets.
So for twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, general, admit, admin, school admin, central services, these are the lines we're referring to.
So that one, yeah, I don't know. All I can tell you is, so just so you know, historically, um, I look at the subsections, but for me, I'm looking at the bottom line.
She's on, no, I'm on vacation right now.
And of that two point five, I know that couple of hundred thousand is in there for Transwestern, to pay back Transwestern. But on that specific, that I can't answer, I don't know. Do you know when she's coming back?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth, okay. Any questions on budget and taxes?
Okay. Number seven, information discussion items, no action taking. Governing board members, the only thing I have is that Mel has asked me to leave as, as the board reporter, so, and I've agreed with that. So we have an opening for our board recorder, if anybody's looking, anybody's interested. It's, um, it's, to be honest and fair, it's a pretty tedious job to be board reporter. It's, um, it, 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 it takes a good, it takes a good bit of effort, it's tedious, it has to be exact, it has to be right, and nobody else says thank you. Although there, I think there's, I think there's a site that attached to it, isn't there?
Yes.
There is a site that attached to it.
I think it's the Orla Lee actually.
Orla? If you know anybody, send, send them to any board member.
We have a training here today.
We have what?
A training.
A training.
She's like right here.
Oh.
I did say I'm interested, but if anybody else really wants it, then I don't mind.
Okay. I didn't know that.
That's right.
I was just keeping my word. Okay, uh, what other board members, anything?
Well, I would like to say minute, um, at least personally to apologize to our two internal candidates. That the way they were notified essentially was through a Facebook post with the agenda regarding the incoming superintendent's contract. And again, I would personally like to apologize that that is how you guys found out about your status with the position. I guess I would just like to say that August sixteenth, I'm going to an Arizona School Board Association training. I know it's on the job technically, but what better time will I need now? So I just want everybody to know I'm stepping into this with not very much experience in anything, but I look forward to gaining ground and knowledge.
You did too. I'm also attending. Though I've been at this for a while, so it's good that it's constantly changing, so. I guess I also would like to apologize that you guys heard the announcement that way. We, we don't actually have an H R person, um, this was a little bit of a scramble in the way this hiring process was handled, so I do apologize. If we weren't a little bit more organized in how we handled that. Scott worked really hard to kind of navigate things and Rebecca Kaufman, who is the lead on our selection committee, also worked really hard to get interviews set up and get things, um, and moving in the right direction. Could have done a little bit better on the job in terms of assigning responsibilities through the process. If we did have an H R person, I think it would have gone a lot smoother, but we were all just trying to chip in where we could. Doing the best we can.
Anybody else? Okay, summer work ethic.
Okay. Um, if you get a chance, you might wanna take a stroll through the Mary Bean, it has almond carpeting, first grade's got it, kindergarten's got it, second grade is next on the list. It's really nice carpet, it's colorful, um, and it wears well, it's commercial grade, we installed it ourselves, so, and this year it allowed us to do that. That looks really good, there are several people that have been here a lot, working on it. Scott Silverman, who's maintenance, you have Melissa, who's instructional aide, working summer, you have Phyllis, who's cafeteria, Charlie, who's bus driver, Hattie was here a little bit. You also have teachers who are here on a regular basis in their classrooms, getting those set. Who I forget, that's regularly here.
Chetney.
Oh, Chetney, who's preschool aide, she's here. And I don't know if any of you have ever laid carpet, it's tedious work, um, the only thing I can say is I'm glad it wasn't me. Cuz it would not match nearly as well as it does right now. Working on the grounds, sped septic has been started but not completed yet. Painting, we are painting the old sped building. One of the reasons there's been a little bit of a delay is it has lead paint, so we have to do a lead paint abatement. And Scott went to, Scott Silverman went to Phoenix, took a one-day class. And within the next year, it's gonna be time for the Arizona Quality A D E Q, something.
The Department of Property Management.
Yes, there you go, they have to, they will come out. Yes, there you go. They have to, they will come out, um, take samples. They're looking for lead, arsenic, we test the water every year, um, asbestos, many of those other, other items. And then they give us a plan on abatement and kind of what our current status is. So as they're doing the lead, they're scraping, they're in full bubble suits, um, which are very hot, especially this last week. Scraping on plastic and then they will get to painting.
Which, which building is this?
The old sped building.
The old sped.
Yeah, the one, it's the one that we have to be careful because it is an historical, it's a historical site. And we just have to be real careful what we do with it because we don't wanna lose that status. And if you look at it, I mean, it's a circa late twenties, early thirties building. It is a, it's a really cool building. You can look at the foundation, the foundation is, is rock, it's very neat. Couple of other things, the school board has a copy of what's called Budget 25. That's the one that looks like this. So this is what happens. The state requires us to submit a budget, and then the state looks at it and tells us if they agree or not. And if they disagree, they tell us what they think the number should be. And then they make us change the budget to reflect those numbers. And what I just want the board to be aware of is if you look at the number on the far right-hand side, that's the difference between what we say and what the state says, and we are on the money. And when we get to the expenditure report, you will see that we are a little bit over 200,000 in the black. Don't get too excited, you already know where we're gonna spend it, it's called transwestern. So you have Budget 25. You also have, um, with the adopted, or when the state, when the governor signed the budget, they also signed, um, several amendments to it, and they're mostly under what's called the Cobb Amendment. And that deals with, um, for example, no school districts currently can mandate masks. They can recommend them, but they cannot mandate them. So then the issue becomes for a family that would like their children to wear masks, how do we do that in an equitable manner if that's the decision of our parents, of any of our parents? Also, for example, prohibition on critical race theory. Prohibition on teaching anything controversial. Not exactly sure, for any of you that watched the Euro Cup game on Sunday, I got a couple of questions. It's just because England didn't win. Italy played very well though. So this is just really for the board, an update on some of the stuff that came out of the legislature. Probably, I would say, within two months, the website's gonna pull across to a new platform. AZ Merit, we are waiting for the parent reports to send out AZ Merit scores, and then they're gonna report to the board. I will tell you generally, um, we had some classes that did extremely well. We had a couple of classes that didn't do as well as we had hoped. And the first thing we do is try to take a look at why we think that happened. Holes in the curriculum, um, other factors that may have applied. Without trying to come up, it's not an excuse thing, it's simply why did this happen, how do we fix it? I will tell you, overall averages, as a school, we did better. The average of our, so this is what I do. I take our average in a grade and in a subject versus the state's average, and I plus or minus it. Then I add up those plus or minuses to see as a school, are we behind the curve or ahead of the curve? We are ahead of the curve as a school. There are some individual classes that are behind the curve. There is also, the county, um, has offered to do a training on Robert's Rules of Order. And if you guys, outside of the training that you guys have already signed up for, um, just additional. Robert's Rules of Order are not fun, but they are a way around a public meeting so that things are done decently and in order. Mr. Chairman, that is my report.
You guys wanna do that on retreat day? Robert's Rules of Order?
Yeah.
I can ask, I don't know if they can do it on.
Oh, they haven't already set up a timeline, they just offered to come out?
They just offered, my understanding.
Yeah, they just offered, yep. And it's gonna be with, I think it's a guy from the Alphabell, who is just a wealth of knowledge on open meeting law, Robert's Rule of Order, how, how they are modified for a small organization because a small organization does not have to follow the complete, if you've ever seen Robert's Rules of Order, it's a paperback about hmm, three-fourths to an inch thick. Yeah, um.
We set a timeline on?
I will tell you what, I will ask, ask. I will talk to the county, and I will put the county in contact with you.
Ellen.
Okay.
And would, would it be all right with you to do it on our retreat day?
I was wondering if it's an option to reschedule our retreat day.
We can.
That, that's my.
Okay.
And I'll talk to the county, I'll talk to Cheryl Kaufman.
Okay, call the public, and I see 78th.
So I love that we're talking about transparency and about what happened last with this hiring thing, cause I have some questions. And I wrote them all down, and I'm giving them to you guys so I can just go right through them and make it very, very easy. I'd like to start by confirming that the president has been on the board in some capacity for 10 years, and the vice president has been on the board in some capacity for five years, is that correct?
That's not correct.
Okay, what, what is it?
It will be 10 years when I finish this term.
Okay.
I have served a four-year term and I just.
So you're almost on 50.
I just started a new term in January and for two years.
Okay. So I'd like to give then a brief timeline of, of what I've seen. The meeting prior to me getting here, there was a text message from the vice president to one of the school teachers. I have attached the text message to this, um, I will post it up on Facebook so that everybody can read it. My question is, um, can you explain, please explain to me why you felt it was appropriate to attack all the teachers, call them names, tell them they work for the homeowners in a demeaning way, call them babies, tell them they work to, to work elsewhere due to the demographics that you came up with? I'd like to know where you got those stats, cause I searched for it everywhere and I couldn't, I couldn't find it. I could find about 50%, but not 70%. The whole narrative was, of the text was intimidating, and I don't understand. I don't understand why, what, I don't understand what your ultimate motive behind that text message would be other than to cause complete chaos, especially calling out Doc and saying that he stirred up a hornet's nest and then walked away. Why would you say all of that to all of the school and do that in a very demeaning and intimidating way?
I wouldn't send that to the whole school.
I didn't say you sent it to the whole school, you talked about the whole school. Would you like me to read it?
This is his call to the public?
Yeah.
I say this, can you, you wanna talk either, you can?
I have more than half.
Because call the public means you can talk and we can listen.
Okay.
You can take any actions.
All right, perfect. Now I'll just continue with my questioning and, and we'll figure it out later. At the next meeting, Scott, um, you tried to trade a vote with Kirsten in front of about 20 people that were in the audience. Again, in the nine years, um, that you've been, and have you taken any trainings that, that told you that this was an improper action? And Kirsten is vice president, in the four years, in your experience, why wouldn't you have said that that was unethical to trade votes? You can't answer that, so I'll keep going. Last meeting was about the contract. Why did the applicants find out by the vice president of the board announcing it on Facebook? Why weren't they personally called? You guys already addressed that there were, there were problems. Why wasn't Doc there? Why did the board vote, or, or did the board vote not to allow Doc to be involved? And if not, then who made that decision?
I made the decision.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, anyway, Scott, did the board give you a budget to stay in? What was it and did you go over it? You obviously can't answer that. If or when you went over the budget, did you discuss this with any other board member or make the decision on your own? Did you show the contract to any of the board members prior to the meeting? How much time did the board members have to review your negotiation offer before they had to vote on it? Did anyone ask to delay or go into executive session? When that did happen, because I have that on video. Why did you, with your nine years of experience, did you say no after a really long pause, but offer up no alternative, which there absolutely is one? Kirsten, you're the vice president, you have four years of experience, why did you not off, offer up an alternative? Why did Mel, who is not on the board, speak up at that point, but also didn't give an alternative, just said no? Why have you been on the board for five to 10 years and not know this, yet I've never been on the board at all? And I know absolutely you should have done a 24-hour table and gone into executive session the next day so that you had the opportunity to talk about it. I know that because I asked Cheryl. I know that because what I heard when I described anything that I see is bad boardsmanship, horrible ethics. That's what I hear. So with that said, with the extreme bias that I've seen personally over the last three board meetings, and I have it on video, it seems that you violated ethics and policies to prevent the next rules in line. Thank you.
Okay, action items, consent agenda, we need a motion to adopt.
Make that motion?
I'll second.
Call on paper? That, that was the only one that presented. Okay, specific items of business district, consideration and adoption of.
Scott? Can I address an issue on the consent agenda?
Sure.
Okay. If you look at the expenditure budget, which is this lovely document right here, and if you look at the bottom line, okay, don't, like I said, don't get real excited. So this is a summary, and if you look at the very first line, it says Fund 001, and the budget balance, remaining budget is $205,805. If you look at the overall revenues that the school has, it's over 600,000. But that includes things like forest fees, some grants, um, it's not necessarily money in the bank. The 200,000 is money in the bank. I just wanted, showed, told you to point that out?
Okay, thank you. Specific items of district business. One, consideration and adopt, adoption of accepted budget for a school year 2021 and 2022. Um, any, any discussion?
I would like to wait until we have an answer.
I think we have a timeline.
So, um, they are concerned about the admin moving. There's, I think it's just a re-categorization, there's another line here that says it might have something to do with.
You can't adopt that budget right now, there's a discrepancy, plus it's not online, none of us can look at it. Everything you guys have looked at.
It should, it should.
It's not. On your, on your website, you could have pulled it up, and it just says it can't be pulled up. So has any of you looked at that? I don't feel comfortable having you adopt a budget that you came up with a hundred thousand dollar discrepancy on. Maybe do it a first reading, adopt it in your next meeting, or have a special session to do it.
Can I address that? There's not a discrepancy, Mike, it has to do with why one particular line went up.
With that landmark, it's not online, none of us can review it.
You gotta.
Work and stay tuned, we should be able to see the budget.
I agree.
Yeah.
What's our.
Thank you.
When you have to be posted?
By 15th.
Let's not talk around till we get back to it, so we know why you don't.
She will be back till 15th.
I can text her, I can text her, and she has her laptop, she can get in and find out why and address that question.
Can we do that by tomorrow?
Okay, I'd like to mention this, I like page four of eight. Line four, which is, quote it as 2300, 2400, 2500, administration. It goes down 77.4%. I really think it's a recoding issue, um, I hope that answers your question.
I, I, I think it's issue that it's not online.
My issue is being able to see the budget.
Best to be available.
No, I agree.
I think that's valid.
We, we've been trying really hard to.
Yeah, I, I understand, but your meeting minutes aren't online, everything is down. So we can't, as constituents, none of us have been able to, we, I never, I looked for your meeting minutes from the previous meeting. I've looked at for the meeting minutes of this meeting, none of it's online. Every time you go, it just says it's unable to pull it up right now with a black screen.
It doesn't work on a phone, I've noticed, if you go on a computer.
Yeah, it won't work on my phone.
You can download the documents that's there, but yeah, I know.
That's a great explanation.
So.
Well, I, I do think.
I've been able to download them on my desktop.
Okay, well, most of us in this technology today, most of us are looking on our phones.
Yeah.
So it should be able to pull up on a phone.
Not on a current platform.
As a board member, I've made a motion to hire a web person and an IT person. And that has not been implemented yet, been passed, um, but.
Well, if it's on there.
It's a problem that I've been trying to fix for a while, and I would like some support from the community to, uh, to get our website functional.
Well, maybe it should say on there that it's not available on, on phone or whatever. But when I go to look for it and it's not there, as a taxpayer, I should be able to see the budget. And you guys are adopting a budget that I haven't seen, I don't know if other people are in the same boat as me.
I, I think that's valid, I agree.
And I'll look at it today, if you wanna have a special session and vote on it tomorrow, I'm fine, I wanna see the budget.
Well, let's deal with the budget, cause we have a timeline, cause we're in serious trouble with the timeline, about 15. So solve one problem at a time. So, I need, we can tail that, we can tail the budget, but I need, I need a firm commitment for a board meeting by the 15th. Right, it's 15th, is deadline?
Yep.
I can phone in, but I'm on 12 the next three days.
Okay, phone in is fine, that's on. And I'm over, I don't have a problem.
If we do it early enough tomorrow, like, if we do it four.
Four. Yeah, it does have to be posted 24 hours.
But is it not posted, or does it just not look like something that someone else signed?
It has.
I'm gonna check that right now. The minutes are coming up on the website. The minutes are up, but no, it's not phone accessible.
So what about? Yeah, cause I tried to do it on, not gonna get on my phone.
Mike, that's not us, that's the state, that's irrelevant, that's irrelevant.
In the past, Mark, when we've walked in on budget night, there's been budgets for everyone.
Yeah.
Where are they?
Well, there's.
You're gonna give it to me now so you guys can vote tonight?
No. Gonna give it to you now?
No, I mean.
We gotta have.
They were up there.
Okay, well, I didn't see when I came.
You know, one more. Wednesday at 4:00?
I'm good, don't worry about it, go ahead.
Sixers?
If you guys did have something, I can come up with a free join in for nation. So either way, one of us, I'm fine, it's 4:00, and she's, your hands on, so you can hit the problem, so.
4:00? Okay, 4:00 Wednesday. Mike, 4:00 Wednesday, we'll, we'll get it up and get it posted. Those of you that don't know, Mike, Mike used to be a board member, he was. Those of you that don't know, Mike, Mike used to be a board member, he was a member when I first came. Okay. So that's table with Winston. Consideration and approval of community resource center. Need a motion to approve this.
Make that motion?
Okay, we, what is totally approved now?
I'm signing the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, need imposed? Okay, motion passed.
Thank you.
Number three, consideration and discussion of safe bus, I'm sorry. Considering and discussion of bus safety, bus safe, supposed to be safety, going pickup. And that was, that was brought to our attention last time, so we need a motion to discuss.
I'll make that motion, a second now.
Okay. What are we gonna do?
Or is this somebody behind, you wanna say?
Is there a plan that's been written out?
Why do they even need the backup, you have room to pull through?
What's that?
Why do they even need the backup, you have a pull through?
They do, but some of them park in front of the actual maintenance building, or bus park, so then they have to back up, go pitywampus to pull through. That's the only reason why. But then the recommendation was to have someone out there watching, to keep kids away, or maybe even have bus drivers out there to-
I don't understand why we can't have people out there. Cause if you're sitting in a bus driver's seat, and you're looking out the back window, you can't see a tall person back there.
No.
Let alone a child.
Yeah.
So I don't know why we don't have safety spots.
Now, bus parks are pulling in, I think there's-
So that- So what we're suggesting is that's an official change of policy. That'll be, that'll be school policy. And I think that's, that's the right way to do it.
It's truly a- You can make, the board can make it policy, but it can also simply be a rule or a practice that the board has instructed transportation to leave five minutes earlier, and to have a person behind the buses guiding them back till they can go through.
Do we wanna make it a rule or practice, or we're gonna make it a policy?
I think it should be a policy.
I think for legal reasons, we'll have to make it a policy, cause if something happens.
If they didn't follow it, and they got hurt, I don't know, I mean, you just don't want that to happen.
I'm inclined to agree it should be a policy.
Also, I think we need to do a training or a practice with the bus drivers, cause it's a new thing, it's a change issue.
Well, yes, but hey, there's a practice they do all the time, that should be just part of their normal training.
Now, what time do the bus drivers dismiss all, what time are they coming back to start here?
Good question, I know.
Because if we're required, and then so we get a certain point, are we stepping on a line of when?
No, they're usually back here well before, because they have to reprint their bus. So no, they have time.
So do they get a break in to leave there?
Nope.
Policy up here for a brief.
I need to, so I'll, I'll, I'll motion that we adopt a policy of ground personnel, one person watching and assisting the drivers. Do I have a second?
This will then stand as first reading? Yeah, has to be another reading of the written policy.
Next meeting. Yeah, and it should be written out, so probably should be clear.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so we need to vote on the first reading, or let it-
No, there is no vote, you just, so actually then, if there's any motion, you pull a motion, and it essentially-
Table a motion.
You're tabling, okay.
Okay, request for future agenda items.
I would like to see if we could, I know we've got a lot of things coming up with board retreats and staff retreats and schools starting. I think there was a big discussion that community members would like to be able to be heard, so I would like to propose that we have a work session. I think that, that was a long overdue, and I, and that's coming, I won't use the word consensus, because I can't say that consensus, but if you read any of the community forums.
The question is, when do you want to do this?
Are you talking about a town hall meeting?
Kind of a town hall work session. But in legal, what a school board can do, cause we can't attend a town hall meeting, and it-
No, you can't, but if you have a work session, in which there are no items of specific, no specific items for the agenda, and yet you simply make it open, you don't even have to do a call with the public, you can simply make it an open discussion. And if there are a couple of lead items that you might wanna put in there, if there are parents who have, or community members who have a specific topic they would like to discuss with the board, it wouldn't be bad to get that information to Scott, so he can put it on the agenda. And then you can also make it open for discussion, cause there's no legal action taking place. It's a discussion, you can go to items for future agenda. And then everybody who comes in needs to understand that this is just a discussion, no legal actions taking place. But it can then, but then that allows for an open, free conversation, establish the ground rules. You know, how are we gonna conduct this conversation? And then if there, if there are items that want to, the board wants to specifically address, then those become future agenda items.
Yeah, let's, let's get through our board retreat, get through the school retreat, get schools started, and pick probably Saturday, a Saturday when everybody can get up, not Saturday?
I can, if it's far enough ahead, I can just pass it off. I think when the school's started, we'd always try to get input from our parents of the times that they took work for all of them.
There traditionally is an open house, right, before school starts?
There is, but it usually has a different purpose.
Well, it does, what I was gonna say is, at that point in time, you could maybe, you know, make notification that this is in process, maybe ask for, you know, topics or times that would work best, or whatever.
If we wanna send a message out of a day or time that would work well for people, can we have that put on the lunch menu?
You can have it put on the lunch menu, and you can have Julie send it out on one call now. She now, she has, has had full access to that.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Can I just ask one question? Why would we do the town hall or the work session after you've created the policy? That doesn't seem like that's the right order, like you're, you're creating the policy, and then you're finding out what the community wants?
Nobody's, nobody's creating a policy.
Or what's the retreat, I guess the retreats is what I'm talking about.
Retreat's a train, really a training session for the board, and then the school retreat is the training session for the whole school.
Okay, so it has nothing to do with not school, I got it.
Okay.
And then there would be a meeting with the community and parents in a work session to discuss whatever topics are on anybody's or-
And the question is timing, when, when can we get everybody together to do that? And I think a Saturday, cause most people work, a Saturday would probably be a better, better day to do that. Saturday or Sunday, but I'm assuming a Saturday.
When does school start now for a retainer? The night?
Offered to facilitate something, or if you're interested in kind of a community delivery.
Hey, I have training and years of experience in holding facilitated meetings. And at any time, I am willing to do that.
Thank you.
At any time, for any reason.
Yeah, I, I will take a minute.
So we're gonna wait to get-
Oh, yes, for free.
Get schools started.
Because how many fans can they take higher of as much?
Okay, before we adjourn, all the new board members, you need to know that you can talk directly to the superintendent, you don't need to talk to me. Pick up the phone, call him, go and see whoever the superintendent is. Because on, and outside of board hours, the tables are level. So if you have a question, you don't have to, you don't have to ask me. You can, you can go directly to the superintendent.
Do I call you?
No, no, but I'm just, for those that have, you know, just, just so you know, there's an open door, call.
How many board members are there presently?
Five.
Five now?
Yep.
Can we add two more, or?
I have a new one.
Okay, so-
You have two new board members, introduce yourself.
So, three board members constitutes a quorum, correct? No matter where you guys are.
Right.
Even if you're at Costco, so.
That's right.
So, I don't know how you could do this meeting with the public and all of you.
It'll be a board meeting.
It'll be a board, it'll be a work session.
A work session.
So, okay.
So there's five board members now.
Yeah, what he's saying is that these are friends of open, open meeting law. We cannot, because there's not five members, three of us, if three of us are talking together, that would be an illegal, unposted board meeting, doesn't matter where it's at.
Even on the phone.
Even on the phone.
Yeah, just making-
Yeah.
Thank you for all for your service, I appreciate you guys being board members.
You know, huh?
So here's, it's awesome.
Okay. All right, do you need more? Okay, need a motion for adjournment?
Make that motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, where are you? Oh, it's actually, I thought that was, you can post that, I didn't see it.
I would like to thank you guys all for coming to the meeting. It's hard, it's- Oh, did you sign it?
Yeah, I signed it.
What?
Do I sign it with audio?
You said you were signing it.
It's, I'll tag you back, so the short end will be up.
It's just a mess.
And if someone happens, because I'm, I gotta call.
I know, I can't. I can't use my phone, but I was gonna get it. So I'll let him say it.
Yeah, so where did it come from?
So. But you know, I thought that, that-
Um, but tell me, does this, your name, or my asshole?
No. You came here, someone's on the floor.
I think that part is, no.